And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision, with the provision of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Here.
Mrs. Keegan.
Here.
Mr. Pala.
Here.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Good evening, everybody. At this time, I would like to open up the meeting to the public on agenda items only. As I see, no one has signed up for anything. I close that portion of the meeting, and we will move on to... We're going to start with some presentations tonight. That's a good place to start. We have two presentations tonight, one from the girls softball team and one from the girls cheerleading. So we'll start with the softball team. Thank you.
I'm Coach Valardi. This will be my 10th season at Cedar Grove High School at Chastain Ave. Is this mine?
Do we have a microphone? There it is. Otherwise, the people at home can't hear you.
Close to it? Okay. All right, hello. My name is Coach Valardi. This is my 10th season as the head softball coach at Cedar Grove High School. I'm requesting for the Board of Ed for approval for a 2024 spring training Florida trip. Last year, we went. We had a great time. We had a 27-3 record. We were number two in the state. I really think that this trip has really benefits my team and our girls for the season. The trip will be similar to last year's trip. We'll go one less day, actually, not seven nights. It'll be five nights, six days. We do seven to eight scrimmages, single games, and double headers. We plan on only missing two to three days of school. Let me get this out. So if you open up this packet right here.
For the KSA?
We stay at Cabana Bay. Can you guys hear me if I kind of like leave this so I could open this or leave this right here? Is that okay with you guys?
You're getting the thumbs up.
Okay, cool.
From the boss over there.
All right. So if you scroll through this packet, really, we're going to play double headers out there. As you know, in March, it's snowy, rain. Last year, we went to Florida, and down here, it was raining all week. So we really benefited from that trip. We played seven double headers down there. And really, it's not even about softball. It's about building team chemistry. So I think that's super important for our girls, and I really think that these softball players deserve it. They represent your school so well. When you hear about Cedar Grove, a lot of people think football. We think softball. So I'm just presenting this in hopes that we can go. And if you want to ask any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer anything. I do send out packets to every teacher. They sign it, schoolwork. We have mandatory study hall sessions down there. That's about it. Any questions? No?
No. I would just, I don't have any questions. I would just say that I love the idea of this trip. I did it four years as a player and two years as a coach, so I've sat in your seat, and I think it's a great opportunity. So I'm excited to see you guys, you know, ladies go again. The only thing I think I would just bring to everyone's attention is just to make sure that, as the trip gets closer, that everybody is in good academic standing.
Mm-hmm.
Because there is several days of school that are going to be missed, so just to be on top of your grades going into the trip and that, you know, everybody is solid standing when that time comes around and attendance.
Yep, absolutely.
Which I'm sure is already factored into your...
Yes.
...your program.
Good. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just leave this here?
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move into our next presentation, which is our Cheerleaders.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nicola Farkey. I'm the head coach of the cheerleading team. I'm here today with some of the athletes and my assistant coach, Nikki Goby.
We are proposing, oh, thank you.
Tonight, we're proposing our Nationals trip. Last year, we took second place in Wildwood. And this year, we're looking to travel into Orlando, Florida at Walt Disney World Resort. But this year, I would like the girls to present it and explain why they feel it's important for us to go as a team and a program, so I'm just going to hand it off to them.
Okay, so this is, so the overview of the trip is the UCA High School Nationals in Orlando, Florida, and it's going to be from Thursday, February 8th to Tuesday, February 13th, with a total of 16 athletes and two Board of Ed-approved coaches. So the goals for attending the UCA High School Nationals is to become a nationally recognized program. It's also to strengthen the program and current student athletes, allow athletes to connect with other programs, develop skills outside of the sport itself, such as teamwork leadership, and have a team bonding experience.
Now, about UCA, the Universal Cheerleaders Association was created to provide the highest-quality educational training for cheerleaders with the goal of incorporating high-level skills with traditional crowd-leading. Today is the largest cheerleading camp company in the world. UCA trains over 1,800,000 cheerleaders every summer, over 3,200 sessions across the country. UCA also celebrates cheerleaders' incredible hard work through the glory of competition at 50 regional events across the country and their championships at the Walt Disney World Resort. It's a three-day competition at USPN Worldwide of Sports in Walt Disney World. For more than 40 years, the UCA National High School Cheerleading Championship has been the culmination of the season for cheerleaders across the nation. It's the most prestigious high school national championship in the country and the perfect opportunity for cheerleading teams to get together and celebrate each other at the Walt Disney World Resort. The UCA NHSCC is the only high school cheerleading championship endorsed by the NFHS, reflecting the values we share and the high standards we have developed for our camp curriculum, regionals, and the NHSCC.
So the itinerary for the trip be on Thursday, February 8th, we would travel from Newark to New Jersey to Orlando, Florida. Then Friday, February 9th, we would practice, have team bonding at the Walt Disney World theme parks, and team dinner at Disney Springs. Saturday, February 10th, we would have our Day One of UCA High School Nationals. Sunday, we would have Day Two of the Nationals, and then a team celebration event for all schools at Disney's Hollywood Studios. Then Monday, February 12th, we would have Day Three of UCA High School Nationals. Today, February 13th, we would have a travel day from Orlando, Florida to Newark, New Jersey. Cost and fundraising. So there's an estimated total cost per athlete of $1,500. The price per athlete is already lower due to fundraising efforts, and we will continue to fundraise throughout the season to lessen the cost as much as we can. This will go towards the competition, flights, busing, et cetera. So recap, this is the UCA High School Nationals in Orlando, Florida. The date's Thursday, February 8th to Tuesday, February 13th, with a total of 16 student athletes and two Board of Ed-approved coaches. Thank you for all your...
Any questions for us? That's it. No questions? Again, just the same, that the athletes are in good academic standing when the time has come to go.
Absolutely.
I'm sure that's part of the program.
It is.
I'm excited to hear about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, girls.
School night.
Yes, yes. Go home and study. Okay, moving on. I'm going to start off with some committee reports. I just want to start off by saying that the board attended the school board's conference last week. Three of the members attended. Some of the things that we did while we were down there, we attended sessions regarding ways to move forward with an effective referendum. We went to some sessions that talked about some potential legislation issues that are being discussed at the time. We attended sessions on data-driven instruction and construction pitfalls while you're in the midst of a referendum, and ways to increase some community communication. So these were three and four days. Some of us were there for four days, some were for three. Some intensive work on ways to just improve the overall functioning of the district. So it was definitely a positive event for us. So I just wanted to start off by saying that. Before we get to our committees, Mr. Kelly, you're going to have to remind me because sometimes I forget when you are down there. Mr. Kelly is our, one of our student representatives this year, so thank you. I appreciate you coming. Florrie?
Good evening. My name is Bobby Kelly. I am co-president of the All School Council with Ava Jablonsky. She's not here tonight. She'll be here next month, and then I'll be there a month after that. For the first overall thing, this week was Spirit Week, and the best day is obviously tomorrow because it's Halloween. We'll be having the Halloween costume competition, so All School Council will be awarding awards based off best individual costume, best duo costume, and best group costume, so that'll be fun, hopefully. Me and my friends will be dressing up as the dodgeball players from the movie Dodgeball, so hopefully we win the best group award. That's the plan. The second order of business is, for the month of November, we will be holding a canned food drive, so we'll have a box available in the front vestibule in the front office, and then we'll also have a box available by the auditorium. So just bring as many canned items as possible because we're going to donate it to the local homeless shelter. Then the last thing we have is a lot of our fall sports are moving into the state tournament, so, you know, hope for the best in the month of November, so, you know, we're excited.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
You are free to stay and free to go.
All right, thanks. We'll take that as a go.
Oh, my goodness, too funny. Okay, so we'll go down the line here. Mr. Marzullo, any committee reports?
I also just attended the school boards, which we had a, you know, very educational piece as far as board members. Some of them are, you know, new to this and learning on the go, so it was very informative committee, you know, conferences that we attended, and as far as committee reports, I don't have any, so I'm going to pass that on to Mr. Pala.
Thank you. Well, curriculum instruction did not meet this month. Anticipated we will meet at some point next month. Also, in the area of personnel, personnel report will be as presented by the superintendent through resolution.
Skia.
The Policy Committee did meet earlier this month just to review some already existing policies that just needed some language updates. They are listed on the agenda, I believe. And the Facilities Committee met earlier this month. Ms. Dora and I met with Mr. Rosso, Mr. DeVita, Mr. Bannon, and Mr. Dressel, our architect. We discussed the rod grant approval, the plan to address North End and South End HVAC and electrical upgrades, and we're working hard to address as much infrastructure work as we can with the rod grant and remaining as our funds before we start to approach the referendum. We're aware of the effects the current economic climate has on the community, and we want to be sure we're being as fiscally responsible as possible. We also want to ensure we're properly addressing the growing programming needs of the district now and for the future.
That's pretty much it. Thank you. Mr. Grandi.
Thanks. So I attended, I'll start by saying I attended two Essex County School Boards Association meetings to discuss and vote on a symbolic resolution. And the substance of that resolution is to broadly resist any efforts to ban books and to pledge to work with stakeholders and organizations, including outside organizations, in that regard. While the resolution ultimately did pass, Cedar Grove did not vote in favor of it, and that was primarily due to a lack of clarity and purpose for the resolution as it was presented for vote. So like I said, the resolution was merely symbolic in nature. It had no, has no legal force or effect, and doesn't affect any of our district policies, and has no bearing on current or future actions of this board. I also attended a Finance Committee meeting on October 13th, and I was with Paul, Tony, and Mike. And at this meeting, we discussed a few different things. We discussed the approval of the rod grant also, an amount of $375,000 each for two projects. And the projects to be undertaken, again, are for electrical upgrades at both North End and South End, as well as for HVAC upgrades at North End and South End gyms as well. Under the grant, the state covers 40% of our costs, with the remainder to come out of our capital reserve account. And so with this approval, hopefully we'll get that in a few minutes, we can now move on to the planning and bidding phases of those projects with the goal to commence work in the summer of 2024. Mike also introduced at this meeting a supplementary benefit plan for employees, which is being offered through Allstate but being funded through the Affordable Cares Act. And these plans are sometimes called 360 plans because they provide supplementary benefits, such as vision, cyber, and disability coverage, up to a limit, at no cost to employees and potentially at little to no cost to the district. So I think Mike was going to work with the union as well as our insurance reps to introduce these benefits and to gauge the potential level of interest, as I believe there's a certain level of subscription that needs to take place in order to keep these costs down. The next item we discussed was the purchase of a dump truck, which had previously been approved. And this purchase is anticipated to save the district time and money for things like snow removal, salt spreading in the winter, as well as landscaping and field maintenance in the springtime. This spend had already been approved, like I mentioned, but because of delivery issues, there's going to be a proposal here to buy the truck from an alternate vendor, so you'll see that on the agenda as well. And then lastly, there's also going to be a motion to approve dental insurance renewal for the next two years. And there were also two small change orders to the high school boiler project, which totaled just under $4,000. But we already had an allowance that covered most of that in the budget, and those types of change orders are typical par for the course for these types of projects.
Thank you. I just want to add to the, just for clarity for people, for the community, people at home with the rod grants and the reason for the electrical upgrades. So in the current electrical panels and sources that are in our North End and South End schools would not be able to handle any upgrade in AC. So moving forward, if we want to consider to put air conditioning into our elementary schools, we would not be able to do that because the current electrical supply is not sufficient. So the rod grants are going to be used towards upgrading that electrical, so when we get to the point of potentially putting the air conditioning, we have the electrical source that would be able to supply that. And we have a similar situation in the high school with the electrical input for that building as well. The middle school is sufficient. That's correct, right, Mike?
Yes.
Middle school is fine with the current, but the high school and the two end schools would need a whole upgrade in order to bring in any type of air conditioning. So that's really the rationale as to why the rod grants are being used towards that. Okay, I'm going to move on to Mr. Rosso and the superintendent of court.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Three topics I'd like to discuss tonight. The first one being about transportation and looking at the cost comparison of what we've recently done in the past several years where we purchased our own fleet and how that has impacted. We're entering budget season, and we're looking at, always are constantly looking at ways to be responsible with funds. And so tonight, we, you know, Mike, Mr. DeVita, will help to share the cost comparison because I know this is one of the questions that came up based on our weekly updates that I provide to the board. So, Mr. DeVita, would you like to just talk briefly about the cost comparisons of what the fleet has done for the district financially?
Yes, we have four district-owned buses. They're 16-passenger vehicles. And we also have four bus drivers. We have one full-time and three part-time drivers. So the cost range for the part-time drivers between their salary, they get single benefits, between FICA expenses, between gas and maintenance, that comes out to be about $51,000 of a cost to the district. And when I do, I did an average route cost for all of our out-of-district routes that we do. We have 14 of them, and the average expense that we do per route is $78,297. So every time we, you know, purchase a new bus, we do have the expense of the bus. The last time we purchased a bus, we bought those outright. In the future, any buses that we buy, we most likely have to do over a lease, so we have that expense added into it. But in the long run, we're probably saving for every bus that we have. We save between $25,000 and $30,000 per year per route. So we are looking to build our fleet up, maybe get some bigger 54-passenger buses. We do, currently, we contract out all of our athletic trips, and we are starting to do some of the smaller teams, like golf team, ice hockey team, some of the freshman sports. We're starting to use our own driver to do that, so that's, every route that we do that, we're saving about $300 for that. So if we got a bigger 54-passenger bus, that means that we'll be able to do it for a lot more teams and potentially save a lot more money. So we're looking at that and, you know, to see how we can fit that into future budgets.
All right.
Any questions? Sorry.
I mean, it really is when you look at it, the cost of transportation for routes, for a single route per day at times could be anywhere between $900. So it is a huge cost savings and something that is sustainable for the district. All right, the other item I'd just like to bring to your attention, you know, in your packet tonight, you happen to have, Dan Dressel, our architect, has provided an updated vision for the possibility of what LRP could look like if it were to be the next step to create a new school building. Now, under this current idea, you have two prints. You have the aerial view, and then you have a more segmented view of this. So if we look at this, oh, you also have a cost analysis sheet. If you look at this plan here, it's utilizing the current structure and reorganizing in a way that currently could house three grade levels, and in this particular instance, you're looking at grades three, four, five. You're also looking at something, and by the way, you're looking at two floors here. In recent conversations, it was just basically one floor, and now we're utilizing two floors. The other issue is the top floor is currently being used as administrative offices. So Mr. Dressel was able to complete the idea of incorporating three grades but also keeping administrative offices on the ground floor, along with a separate entrance for public access. The other piece of this is, if you look towards the back end of the building where currently there is a field, there is an extension of the building, and that build, that extension houses a music room, art room, and a steam room along with storage and, there's an electrical closet with an office. This is very different than what the previous ideas have been for this concept. The previous idea was based on classrooms, which was a much larger footprint. Now, that footprint of that extension, based on how it was designed, is a possible cost savings of $4 million compared to the original concept of this. Another idea is, what you have to look at is the elevator room and the elevator itself. Currently, the original idea and concept was to build an elevator shaft on the outside of the building facing Pompkin Avenue, but based on his new design, you can actually incorporate this towards the inside of the building where you are utilizing appropriate space. With that, you also are opening up more spaces for bathrooms as well. So when you look at the overall, you're looking, like I said, for, just for LRP, you're looking at, with this design, a cost savings of, from previously, $4 million. Does anybody have any questions on that?
No, when you say cost savings, you mean relative to the...
Original design.
On LRP itself.
This is only, this is only on LRP. Because you're able to reduce the footprint of that proposed extension to the back of the building, and you're not making those around six classrooms, and now you're utilizing them as multi-use spaces, it reduced the actual building footprint. So it does. It's cost and savings of material and space in general. And the other piece of it is, it's very, the way that this is organized now, if you're looking at grade levels, from an administrative perspective, it is very advantageous for instruction and for just the daily happenings of the building. Any other questions? Okay. The last thing I just want to share and update the board on is something we haven't really talked about, but we have as an administrative team have been talking about this, is that we have talked about the concept of AI. And I know it's something that's very hot, and it's a topic everywhere. In fact, businesses are using it already. It's interesting, even medically, they're using this to look at, you know, medical tests. So in the world of education, this has been an extremely hot topic due to the fact that there's a concern with students and how they utilize it and the possibilities where students could use it as a cheating device. And that's something that we are exploring. We have created, as an administrative team, we talk, this is a constant item on our administrative meeting agendas, which we have two times a month. The other piece is, is that the, each building has created their own school-based AI committee to discuss how the impact of AI would look at an elementary building, middle, and a high school building. We've also, our curriculum and instruction department has already started to participate in professional development and sit on various committees at a university level as well to see how they're using it and how it would trickle down to the elementary, middle, and high school level. The other piece of this is, it's not just how students would use it, it's how we, as the professionals, would use it. And we were looking at several areas, and those areas are, obviously, again, student involvement and use of this, but also curriculum development. How could you utilize AI as a curriculum? How could you utilize AI as a curriculum aid in developing appropriate curriculum based on standards and norms across the nation? We're also looking at it as a device for data analysis. Currently, what we do, and traditionally what we've done, is we've used ourselves. You know, we get our data from, whether it's an internal device such as Lincoln or DRA or a STAR assessment or our formative, or formative assessments, but also through our statewide assessments. We're looking also, how could AI help to understand current trends based on particular questions, based on particular content that can help to lay out for us so that we can address that internally with our staff and also our practices? And again, like I said, it's also, how can we utilize this as an instructional practice? There are some very simple, some simple ways of utilizing this. ChatGPT, Google has their own idea of using this. You have to be very specific when you're creating prompts and writing prompts the appropriate way. But it's a tool. It's there. We are recognizing this as an educational institution, that it's not going away. The same way these didn't go away and computers in general when they first came to be. So we're looking at ways of how do we, as an educational community, embrace this? And how do we put in regulations and standards of how not to use it? And then again, how do we help, you know, aid in our development? Because it is, I mean, we're seeing it's rapidly moving and we're looking at the private sector using it in ways that our children are going to have to be prepared to use it. So just wanted to give you an update. I'll, you'll keep updating you on where we are with it, but it's exciting work. It's scary work and it's, you know, it's certainly uncharted territory.
Any questions? Okay. I'm going to move on to the proxy of the meeting, the resolutions. They're on page five of the agenda. Under the business administrators report, can I have a motion for G1 through G16, please?
So moved.
Discussion?
Sorry, I have one, just a couple of, two things on, I think it's G8. There was an attachment in that agenda item on the architectural and engineering service proposal. And on the particular attachment, it's page two of A, I think this is more of a good order point, but in here, this discussion in this document has to do with the work for the, I believe, the rod grant and that sort of services. But it says that the anticipated bid advertisement will take place in January of 2023. I think this is really January 2024.
Twenty-four, yep.
Just didn't want people to think that we already kind of started work on this before.
That's in the attachment?
Yeah, on page two of A. I guess it would be in both documents, one for each school, so there's two documents.
Mike, we noted that.
Yep.
And you said you had another?
No, I had another. Mike had clarified it from the earlier.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. All right, we'll move into page nine. Can I have a motion for H1 through H7, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, but abstain from 3D.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Moving to page 13. Can I have a motion for I1 through I18?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. And we're on page 21. Under curriculum and instruction, motion for J1.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. And under special services, a motion for K1.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grande.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. At this time, we'll open the meeting to the public. Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface comments by stating your name, address, municipality, residence, and group affiliation. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to the three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy or abusive, obscene, or may be defamatory. The rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. So we got a couple people have signed up. Mrs. O'Connell?
I just wanted to come in.
If you could just state your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Carolyn O'Connell and my
Address.
Address, for Bordick Road.
You got it.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, please don't.
So I'm basically here to talk about an elementary school policy on birthdays, which I know many are going to say it's not important, it's not about academic rigor. I get all of that. But I'm with a kindergartner in South, in North End, excuse me, who has been in the school system through the pre-K program as well. So I've been here a few years. And anytime I have any type of question about the policy, the typical response I get is, well, it's been a policy forever. I feel like that is a valid response to an inquiry. What I wanted done was three invitations put into three children's book bags because those three children didn't have their addresses listed. And I had already mailed out the other 16, and I didn't want those three children to be excluded from a kindergarten birthday. And every response I got, in my mind, became more and more ridiculous. I was told that this policy had to be in place because it prevents exclusion. I'm telling you that without putting them in the book bags, you are excluding three children. Doesn't make sense. I'm told that it needs to be in place because it's what South End does. Okay, but this is North End. Will we do things the same? Okay. Why? You shouldn't have to. I cannot imagine that every issue that comes up to play in South End also comes up to play in North End. And they're different buildings. There are going to be differences. So that in and of itself did not make sense. I'm told that it shouldn't be the school's responsibility to hand out invitations. Okay. Granted, maybe it shouldn't. But you put birthday gifts when they send little, like tchotchkes in a bag in all children's book bags and send them home because they're no longer allowed to have birthdays in the classroom. So I don't see the difference. I also feel that in terms of the exclusion, there's going to be a point where I, as a parent, am going to have to explain to my children that you don't get invited to everything. But this wasn't that time. This was a time where I was trying genuinely to invite everybody. One of the names of the people that wasn't posted is an employee of the Cedar Grove School District. Why should that employee have to post their address in order for me to invite their child to a function? All right? I'm told that I can just hand them out at school. Well, my child goes to before and after care and alphabet is pretty high in numbers. So clearly, I'm not the only parent that doesn't have the ability to come and shake hands with people when I'm dropping the kid off or picking the kid up to hand out the invitation. I also think the school should be aware of who is getting excluded. So if you're handing out those invitations and you see that Johnny never gets one, maybe you need to pay more attention to the social interaction with Johnny so that you, as a school district, pick up on something that you may not otherwise have noticed. And Johnny is just a fictitious name that came up. There is no Johnny that I know of. But the point being, we have to, we have to be reasonable. My son is in kindergarten. He did the pre-K program, but from the preschool application process, you realize that the lottery gives maybe two people a chance to join pre-K in this town in any building. So the majority of these children, this is their first experience in the Cedar Grove school system. Parents don't know each other yet. And then you could say, okay, well, it makes sense for kindergarten, but it's not going to make sense later. Why? There's always going to be new children coming into the district. So then that new child gets excluded in the beginning phases of their schooling? It doesn't make sense. And then you say, oh, well, you know, I was told, come to the open house. It worked in this situation because my son's birthday, my older son, is October 27th. My younger son is October 11th. I'm not going to be able to mail out invitations based on the directory not being open early enough, let alone come and hand them out and back to school in order to have this done. And you can say, well, birthday parties aren't important. Well, you know what? Social interaction is important. Social interaction is important. And if parents can do the birthdays, we should be allowed to. And if we want to invite people, we should have the ability an invitation and quietly have it placed in a book bag. And the only other thing I was told was that it would cause the kids to talk about it. Well, do you think they're not going to talk about it if I mail it to their house? So again, nothing that I'm told as to why it's prevented makes any kind of sense. But then I'm given lip service of, we're going to consider it while at the same time doubling down with this all-staff memo that went out or email that went out telling staff to make sure that everyone is doing this because in preschool, they just went home. So I didn't know about this policy. And then it's mentioned in the open house slideshow. So if two days later at the open house, you're putting this in a slideshow and you're sending out an email school-wide, then you're not even considering having a conversation on a policy. And if you're not willing to consider having a policy on something as benign as handing out a birthday invitation to a kindergartner whose address is not listed, what else are you unwilling to have a conversation on that may have a lot more importance down the road? That's all I have to say.
I appreciate you coming tonight and expressing your thoughts. You could just put it on the chair. I don't have an answer for you. I don't know if you're seeking an answer. I think what I can do is follow up with Mr. Rosso and the policy committee is a conversation that they could have and
I was told it is not a board policy. There is nothing board policy that prevents it from happening. It is an administrator decision.
Well, I think it comes down to communication, right? We need to really focus on communication and if it, whatever it is, I honestly, I don't know. Is it a policy or is it an administrator decision? I mean, maybe Mr. Rosso knows the answer to that. I don't know off the top of my head. So if that's the case, whichever it is, then it just should come down to better communication so that you, as a parent, feel heard and the administrator is able, given the opportunity to share what they feel is the right answer for that given situation. I don't have an answer for you now. It's not something that I could give a direction at this point, but it is certainly something that we could follow up with.
I did email every one of you sitting at this table at the same time that I emailed Mr. Rosso, and that was weeks ago.
But the chain of command doesn't come to us.
No, 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 I understand.
It has to go through the school. So we're not going to respond.
No, I'm not asking for you to have responded via email, but it made you aware I was coming tonight. I emailed all five of you. I emailed Mr. Rosso. I got Mr. Rosso's response as to what the policy was and was not. So I already know it's not a board policy. So I understand you couldn't respond to me then, but I feel like you could have had an awareness of it now, in all honesty, because you were made aware ahead of time. And you could have done all you needed to do in the chain of command before I came here, knowing that I was coming here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Young.
Stephen Young, 18 Young Avenue, Cedar Grove. I just want to thank the board and the high school students in the Progressions Program. I am a member of the Cedar Grove Historical Society. I'm on a board of trustees. And the students and their counselors were great. The counselors were very attentive to all the kids, watched out, watched everybody as some of the students are challenged a little. And everybody worked well. And I'm looking forward to continuing this program next year because all of us enjoyed it. And the kids learned the difference between a vegetable and a weed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anybody else before I close this portion? No? Okay, so I closed this portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meeting. The next meeting will be Tuesday, November 21st. It'll be at Memorial Middle School, 6:30 and executive, 7:30 regular. And then the following meeting is December 12th, which will be at the high school auditorium. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.